The Village Board to order for Tuesday, June 25, 2024. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
And trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
A pledge to the place of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the minutes of the open and closed session from May 28, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Uh, 5B, Consider Discuss Act on Open and Closed Village Board Minutes from June 4, 2024.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, there was one here that I might have had a change on. Okay. On page five, well, page nine or page five, the E, under E, um, the Budweiser Clydesdales, um, this was not a unanimous vote. I voted no on that. And I believe on the F, um, about the Fragmites, I believe Tracy voted no.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's the only two changes. With those changes, we have a motion to approve.
Move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda, must state your name and address. You are limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Could you come up to the table, state your name and address for the record, please?
Zoe Van Ashwabanon resident. I live at 1474 Park Plate, or Parkway Drive that backs up to Park Place. On the evening of Thursday last week, or early morning Friday, someone vandalized the wall barrier with graffiti. It's detrimental to our community. It makes us look like we live in the hood, and we're all concerned as neighbors in that area that live there that it's going to attract more vandalism. Park Place Street has been an issue for a while with people dumping garbage behind there, because I know I picked it up. Mary, I've emailed you in 2020. Chris, I emailed you, and there was a mark I emailed also, because I fell into a manhole cleaning up garbage, and you guys fixed it right away. But people are using it as refuse, just throwing out garbage, and now with this graffiti. We also had a gentleman, or somebody, living in our bushes while we were on vacation. He must have used our pool, because there were socks in it when we got home. So this is an issue. I'm here on behalf of all the owners on Parkway Drive. They asked me to come here tonight and ask that you could do, could put up surveillance cameras on Park Place signs that warn that there is some surveillance there to maybe detract people from doing further damage. But we would like the graffiti cleaned up as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Chris has all the pictures. I took them today for him, and I know that others in our neighborhood have reached out to people on the board and also at the village hall.
I actually drove down that street today. Um, yeah, but I, I do believe, we are aware of it, but I do believe that it is a DOT issue, so.
Well, we don't want to be lost in bureaucracy, because this is going to hurt our values of our homes, and we're paying taxes on those houses. So we want it cleaned up. We don't want it lost in translation where it's being passed around the buck. I mean, it, we live in Ashwabanon. We want to keep our area clean.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak on any items not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dave Brown. I reside at 1360 Circle Drive, and I'm here to submit a petition to enforce the, um, 08223 prohibition of loud and unnecessary noise. Um, the property owner, uh, can I mention their address or no?
Sure.
Property owners of have been allowing the use of their property for ATV and dirt bike riding for approximately the past year. On an almost daily basis, between one to five riders drive around the perimeter of the property, continually revving their engines to taunt their neighbors. Excuse me. These vehicles have very loud exhaust systems designed for racing. Some are two-stroke motors that sound similar to a chainsaw but are much louder. Numerous videos of these activities have been recorded, providing evidence that they are in direct violation of the noise ordinance. Um, the ordinance states, you know, engine exhaust, engine motor sound, unreasonable means or having, showing little sense of good judgment or not rational, unnecessary meaning unusually loud, annoying, disturbing, unnatural, or, or alternative methods are available. There are mufflers that nearly silence ATV engines and are readily available at a reasonable cost. Ashwabanon Public Safety has been dispatched on numerous occasions. These teenagers ride for short periods of time, take a break, and then begin all over again to avoid being caught in the act by officers dispatched to the residence. The parents are aware of the activity, and our home at times while violations are occurring. The mother defends this activity, faulting the officers for their policing tactics, while the father states there is nothing that I can do. On June 17, 2024, the teenagers were recorded in plain view riding the vehicles. The view, the video will show them smiling and revving their engines. Ashwabanon Public Safety was contacted. Officer Groll responded and was shown the video. Officer Groll attempted to speak with the teenagers in the home regarding the complaint. They would not answer the door. They have a Ring camera, so they like to sit there and tee-hee-hee and laugh at the officer while he's wasting her time. The petition was limited to contacting residents of Pioneer Drive, Circle Drive, Ken Drive, Timber Lane, and Skylark Lane. Most of those contacted had a story to relate. These teenagers are running stop signs and, and have been nearly hit by cars. They've been riding abreast at night across both lanes with their lights off. Residents choose not to sit outside due to the noise. People who work night shift can't sleep during the day. People with their homes on the market concern they won't be able to sell due to this behavior. And the level of vitriol that was expressed by some of the residents was very surprising. So I have, um, 36 signatures, 35 of which are from individual residences, and I want something done about this, because I've had enough, and so has everybody else. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. I need to make, thank you for your comments. I'm sorry. I need to make a motion to rescind my change on the, um, that Tracy voted no. I didn't think that I had, was up at the one above it. So Tracy did vote no, so that's not a change. It's in the minutes that you voted no.
Thank you.
Just so everybody knows that and is aware. Okay. Any other comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Any other comments on the items not on the agenda?
Mr. Brown, have you gave the petition to the clerk or to the village president?
Here's a map showing all the homes that I contacted. A lot of them, they weren't home. Um, this is a petition. There's a copy of the letter.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the public? Hearing none. We will move on. Number seven, written communications or announcements. This is a resolution honoring Russ Van Wright, retired paid-on-call firefighter for the village of Ashwabanon. Before we do this, because it is a resolution, I would need a motion to approve and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and place on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. I will meet you, Mr. Russ Van Wright, right down over there.
He's an old guy.
Thank you, Russ. Okay. Resolution honoring Russ Van Wright, retired paid-on-call firefighter. Whereas Russ Van Wright has meritoriously and diligently served the village of Ashwabanon, its citizens, businesses, and industries by providing fire protection services in a career that expands for decades. And whereas Russ Van Wright has served the community as a valued, hard-working member of the Ashwabanon Public Safety Paid-on-Call staff, his dedication to service has made him one of the most well-known and respected firefighters throughout northeast Wisconsin. His knowledge and expertise in building, construction, and other trades made Russ an incredible asset to the village and our neighboring communities. Among his peers, Russ displayed a poise and demeanor that everyone knew. No matter what situation they would encounter, Russ would see them return home safely. Russ has never avoided hard jobs or assignments and performed his duties with a work ethic that should be an example to everyone. Throughout his 41-plus years, Russ never lost his enthusiasm or commitment to service. As his career progressed, Russ embraced the role of being the senior guy, providing mentorship to new firefighters and always displaying leadership with his experience and presence. And in the fire service, there is no, not greater title or honor. And whereas Russ Van Wright has performed his duties with honesty, integrity, sincerity, and always demonstrated a high level of professionalism, enthusiasm, and dedication to this department and the village, his commitment to those he has served is why Russ will always be remembered as one of the best to have served the village of Ashwabanon. Through his candor, humility, generosity, and dedication to the village, Russ embodies the true spirit of what it means to be a firefighter. And therefore, be it resolved that the village of Ashwabanon honors paid-on-call Russ Van Wright for his over 41 years of service to the village of Ashwabanon. He has built a legacy among his peers, this community, and our partnering agencies. We wish him well in his life and hope he has a long fruitful retirement, dated this 25th day of June 2024. Thanks.
Hey, before I let Russ go, I gotta embarrass him just a little bit. We talked a little bit in, in this resolution, Mary did, about his generosity. I, I can't even tell you how much, how generous he is. Yes, we want to thank him for his service. He's done a great job with that. He's been instrumental in a lot of people's lives and the protection of people in the village. But his generosity, there's no measure. Uh, just to give you a little example of that, back in February, we had an engine that we put on auction, and Russ was the high bidder for that. He donated that to a volunteer fire department in Creveux. That's the kind of person Russ is, so.
Okay. Moving on to number eight, action on the consent agenda.
Mary, can I just make a quick announcement?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I make a quick announcement?
Sure.
And Brian, before you leave, um, 4th of July is coming up pretty soon, and I've had some residents asking me about the fireworks and the amount that are already being blown off in the neighborhood. Um, and I just wanted Brian to kind of touch on that a little bit, what the rules are in Ashwabanon and really in the state on, on fireworks.
Yeah, uh, real quickly, um, it's simple. We try to keep it simple. Uh, the rules are, if it explodes or goes in the air, it's illegal. Right? That's really all it is. And it's from our perspective, from a public safety standpoint, uh, what we try to do is gain voluntary compliance. So if there's a call or a complaint that someone is shooting up fireworks, we'll go there, we'll talk to them, tell them what they're doing is illegal, um, and let them know that if we have to come back, we're going to confiscate the fireworks and we'll issue a citation. So this is, that's our kind of procedure we do every year. Uh, we try to gain voluntary compliance if we can. Um, if not, then we'll give them a certificate and take their fireworks away from them. So, there you have it.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep. Okay, number eight, action on the consent agenda. 8A, Brown County Intergovernmental 2024-2025 Property Tax Bill Agreement. B, Consider Discuss Act on Class B Beer/Class C Wine License for Backyard Brew LLC, DBA Backyard Brew. C, Consider Discuss Act on the Permanent Premise Extension and 2024-2025 Alcohol License Renewal for Creative Edge Media LLC, DBA Edge VR Arcade LLC. D, Consider Discuss Act on 2024-2025 Retail Alcohol License Renewals. E, Receive and Accept June 2024 Public Works Department Monthly Report. F, Receive and Accept Park Rec and Forestry Department Reports. G, Receive/Accept April 2024 Investment Report. H, Receive/Accept April 2024 Fund Financial Reports. I, Receive/Accept April 2024 Budgeted Expenditures Report. Anybody would like to pull any of those for discussion, or I need a motion to approve?
Can we pull 8E, please?
Did you say E?
8E.
Okay.
There's no other questions or corrections. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Section of E.
We have a motion and a second to, um, accept and approve all of the consent agenda except E. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, E.
Um, just had a quick question for Brian, um, record. Do we know who the new highway commissioner is and the exact date that they will be starting?
So the new highway commissioner is Chris Hardy, and he started on Monday.
He started Monday?
He did.
Okay.
So yesterday.
Are you familiar with him, or you know him at all, or?
Uh, I don't know him personally. Uh, he was a, previously the highway commissioner, um, I'm trying to think of the name of the county, but somewhere Madison area, north of Madison, I'm drawing a blank. Maybe Sauk County.
Okay.
Portage, maybe.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Annie, would you, I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, 8E, please.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve 8E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number nine, public hearing. Public hearing regarding a rezoning request for parcels VA-195-7 and VA-195-9 on Wabi Lane from R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Multi-Family Residential. Aaron.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'll share my screen to bring the proposal up. The, uh, requested rezoning, uh, is for the two parcels on Wabi Lane, uh, VA 195-7 and VA 195-9. They are currently vacant and zoned to R1 Single Family Residential. The request is to rezone them to R3 Multi-Family Residential. Uh, the request is brought forward by the current, uh, property owner, Alan Lee Investments LLC, uh, with Jared Schmidt of Robert Lee in attendance as well. In terms of the site itself, uh, we do have County Highway AAA, Wabi Lane, uh, four-lane arterial, uh, to the south. We do have, uh, Ashwabanon Creek running through the center of this property, uh, roughly along here, and then the associated floodway, floodplain with that. The applicant did submit a, uh, a sketch plan of what is proposed for the property, uh, including, uh, it does identify also the, the creek, uh, the floodway, uh, and the environmentally sensitive areas, uh, on the property as indicated in the blue hatch. The proposed development is the, uh, orange, uh, that you see there. Propose is to develop basically five attached duplex units for a total of 10 units. Uh, at this time, that's for information purposes. Uh, we are looking at the rezoning. The site plan will come before the Site Plan Review Committee, uh, at a future time, should the rezoning be approved. Uh, in terms of the surrounding zoning, uh, to the south, uh, is, uh, it's called IP, industrial park zoning. We do have R1 to the, uh, west, to the north, and to the east. When reviewing a, a rezoning, uh, we need to take a look at the village's comprehensive plan, uh, and what is exactly, I guess, planned for this area from the 2016 plan. Uh, in terms of the planning itself, it's important that any rezoning action be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, and by consistent means furthers or does not contradict the objectives, goals, and policies contained in the comprehensive plan. Um, so therefore, you're basically looking to make sure the rezoning furthers and/or does not conflict with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does break up the village into different neighborhoods, districts, and corridors. Uh, this area actually sits on a border of between two neighborhoods, the Pioneer Neighborhood, uh, to the north, primarily residential uses, and to the southwest business district, district to the south, uh, which is primarily, uh, your industrial business-type uses. The plan identifies, uh, different types of uses as desirable, allowable, or undesirable. Uh, and within the plan, uh, residential multifamily is considered an allowable use in the Pioneer Neighborhood. So it would be allowable provided certain, uh, conditions are met that fit the neighborhood. Uh, and it's also considered allowable, uh, within the southwest, uh, neighborhood as well. Should note, uh, again, that the proposal, uh, does indicate the Ashwabanon Creek through here. We did receive a, uh, email, uh, from a few of the neighbors, uh, along Sunny Creek Drive, uh, and Ren Lane, uh, opposing the, uh, proposed rezoning. I believe a few of them are in the audience, uh, today. Um, the planning commission did recommend approval of the rezoning at their June 4, 2024 meeting.
Okay, thank you. So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this project? Dale, you had your hand up first, so. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hello. Dale Helgren, um, 30-some-year resident of 1311 Sunny Creek Drive. I speak in strong opposition to the rezoning of this area. The homes in this area have been there for many, many years. On our, uh, I think our Call to Sack, there's only been two changes of ownerships in 30 years. This is a very high-value neighborhood. People have been there a long time, and your property value is based on three things: location, location, location. And to butt up against rental property or different kind other than, uh, the original, single-dwelling, uh, zoning is very inappropriate. Um, people are going to lose 50,000 bucks on every home that's within reach of that property. And, uh, if there's tax consequence of it, that maybe the village is going to gain something, I want you to keep in mind that all of the people in those properties that are all along Ren Lane and Sunny Creek probably pay between $5,000 and $10,000 a year in property tax in Ashwabanon. And I don't know anyone within an earshot of me who is in favor of this. So I speak in strong opposition to it, and I hope you would consider that.
Thank you, Dale. Okay, sir.
Uh, my name is Mitch Rice. I live at, uh, 1303 Sunny Creek Drive. Um, I agree with everything that was just said. Um, I guess, one of the questions I had on there, has anybody done a study on the water levels back there? Um, I have videos from springtime, heavy rains. There's a line where the creek is, but when water comes through there, it is way, way past that. I know I've gone back there. Once water subsided, it's wet all the way past where I had surveyed, where my land ends. I feel like if you're going to build stuff in there, you're obviously going to have to fill a lot in there. So where does that water go? I don't feel like that's going to be good for anybody that lives on the other side of that. Um, luckily, where we are, it's higher, but other people, they are much lower than that. Um, not to mention, you know, we moved there for a reason, because we had some privacy. I know I, at the time, I contacted Todd Gerbers and talked to him about building back there, and I have his email from 10 years ago about what it would take to build something back there, getting permits because of the water level, the water table. Um, I agree, I do not want that back there at all. It will bring our property values down, not to mention wildlife. Um, we have great horned owls back there in certain times of the year, um, o- other things like that, that, that's going to affect, and I feel like it's just going to have a negative effect overall on the entire neighborhood. And again, I, I echo what the last gentleman said. I am vehemently against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Anybody else like to? Sir, could you come up?
Hello, my name is Doug Miller. I'm at, uh, 1334 Wabi, which is a house directly to the left of that property. Um, I'm in the same boat with these guys. I do not want that to go up next to me. Um, rental properties, there's no one managing that kind of stuff. It's never good, and it's not good for anybody's property value. Not to mention, if you would ever go past that property and look, it is underwater all the time, like flooded. So if you had to fill all that, like Mitch was saying before, where's that water going to go? Like, my basement's going to end up getting flooded, because they're going to try and raise that property up higher so that it's not in floodplain. And it was illegally filled once already. So where the property is going to be sitting on, that used to be the same height as all the rest of it. And now it's somehow magically raised itself up 5, 6, 8 feet, whatever it is, but the rest of it's like a gully. So, my opinion is it's not a great idea at all. I, a single-family home, maybe, but further down a little bit. But where they're looking at, it's not a good idea. So, that's my opinion.
Doug?
Thank you.
You are the property straight west of that.
Yeah, yeah, right next door to it.
Am I getting that right? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this? Sir, could you come up?
I'm Roy Gertz. I'm, uh, 1221 Sunny Creek Drive, which is about six lots east of where this property is. But number one, I question the suitability of this lot in the first place, because the last speaker, Doug, I remember when the original people built that house, it was, uh, the property was owned by the farmer at the time, Lloyd Smits and his son Paul and wife Paula, built that home that Doug now owns. And to the east of that, it was a gradual decline down to the creek bottom that his dad used to plant pumpkins in. That property's been built up once already, and now, like he says, probably going to be built up again. So to me, it was never suitable in the first place. When I built my house down, down here, had the village out to look at my property and backfilling around the house, and what they told me, that anything you do on your property that has a quarter-inch impact on upstream water is illegal. Now, the same, does the same apply here? The same applied for all of us that built along Sunny Creek Drive back then. What about this? So I, I don't, I don't think it's suitable in the first place.
Thank you. Cora, come on up.
I'm Cora Denemer at 1237 Sunny Creek, which is east of Dale and the other gentlemen's. And I have a big question. If you're going to put fill in there, where is that water going to go? I already had 50 feet of water or land taken away since the la- last flood assessment, and now if we have more water to deal with, am I going to be looking at water in my house? No, we got to think about this. How many homes and residents are affected by building something here? And not only that, who's going to go into this property? Are they going to start walking along the creek? So now my safety, I don't have anybody walking along the creek now, but am I going to be concerned about that again? So I think there's a lot of things that have to be looked at before any of this should go down.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak for or against in the public hearing? John, come on up.
John Daweska, 1331 Ren.
John Daweska, 1331 Wren, W-R-E-N. I always do that because a lot of people don't. First, I want to apologize to Mr. Zerbal because he got our email three times. Autocorrect does not agree with the spelling of your family name. And then the second time, it didn't agree with the spelling of Ashwabanon, but I think we finally got it too. The email that we sent, and I don't think, unless you want me to to walk through the whole thing, but you can read it yourself. It's self-explanatory. There were nine residents' names on there. Wren and Sunny Creek. Unfortunately, I did not get down to the far end of Sunny Creek. Two things I would, I would like to emphasize is that there's a long history of this area being single-residential. And again, and I know this is in the, in the letter, but approximately twenty-five years ago, there was a request to rezone. I think Mr. Paul was on the board at that time, and the meeting was held in the Cormier Building. That's where the village hall was at that time. At that particular time, the board affirmed that this should be single-residential. So the residents have been relying on the village maps that we received when we purchased the property and the reaffirmation by the village board that this would remain first residential. The other thing is that this is a very desirable first residential area. We've had some turnover in the area. Unfortunately, some of it is because some of us are aging out. But those properties are snapped up very quickly. And that includes the area on Wabi. Several of those have turned over. So in terms of desirability to construct first residential, it's very viable, very desirable. And whoever owns that property, either building for themselves or developing, should have no problem in selling properties that are of the first residential neighborhood. So again, speaking for myself, we strongly oppose it. I think the, the people that you have listed on there or listed on email also strongly oppose. Otherwise, they wouldn't have, wouldn't have agreed to the email. And I would like to suggest that you consider asking for a show of hands because you don't want to have it, maybe you don't want to have everybody come up here and speak, but ask for a show of hands as to who all opposes the project. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this project? Okay. So I'll, I'll take your suggestion, John. Could I just see the show of hands of people who are opposed to this project? Okay, thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak for or against this project? Hearing none. I need a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, number, where's my spot here?
Ten.
Number ten. Consider Discuss Act on a rezoning request for parcels VA-195-7 and VA-195-9 on Wabi Lane from R1, single-family residential, to R3, multifamily residential. So Aaron, before we start this conversation, you know, we've heard, we've heard the concerns of all the people. Can those items be addressed?
Certainly. So as far as, I guess what I'd probably do is defer over to Jared as far as the engineer and the project for the developer in terms of the technical specifications. But my understanding is that there will not be any floodplain filled at all or floodway filled, as indicated. So there will be no impact on the floodway or floodplain for Ashwabanon Creek.
Aaron, can I interrupt? Is that that blue area then shown on the map? So none of that can be filled, can, nothing can be done in that area?
That's correct. Nothing will be developed, filled, cut, anything in that area. Or to the area north of the creek or the floodway, floodplain either. So the only area for that property to be developed is that corner property closest to the southwest corner on Wabi Lane.
Will that be filled at all? Do they anticipate that piece that they're actually going to develop?
I guess I'd probably defer to Jared on that since he's familiar with the site from a project standpoint.
Aaron, that little purple there right behind the proposed building, is that just a wetlands? That's not a retention pond?
That's correct. That is identified wetland that will remain.
It is just wetland. Nothing to do with the property.
No. However, Jared could address stormwater management as well when he addresses the fill. I'm sure they've taken that into account.
Could I have a motion to open the floor? I would like Jared to come up.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Jared, could you come up to the table and state your name and address for the record, and then I have some questions.
Thank you. Jared Schmidt, 1250 Centennial Center Boulevard. One of the owners of Robert E. Lane Associates and working with Almore and applicant, and have been assigned as his agent.
Okay. So you were here, you heard, you heard the concerns, and I don't blame people for having concerns about water in a basement. I had three feet of water in my house when I was growing up in Swamaco. It's not fun. Do you think that this is easily addressed, that they are not going to have water issues? This is very wet.
Sure. So first of all, appreciate the opportunity to speak before the group, and I know there was a lot of questions. So hopefully, after I answer your question, if I can maybe address some other things, or happy to answer questions that the board sees fit. Ultimately, whenever we develop any property, there's a set of rules and regulations that we must follow. In this instance, where we border the creek, there is a regulatory floodplain. Floodplains are made up of floodway and flood fringe. Floodway are areas that are non-fillable. Flood fringe are areas that are fillable. In this instance, almost all of the floodplain is made up of floodway. That's the, we don't have the map up. That's the crosshatch area on the blue lines. And that's areas we cannot touch. We can't impact it. And when you look at the, I guess, to directly answer your question, that creek holds water today, right?
Right.
It's identified in a mapped floodway. We know that there's water there. Our requirements and our restrictions are twofold. One is, anytime you have a project that disturbs greater than one acre, the DNR has regulations that you have to do post-construction stormwater management. The village's code is actually a little bit more restrictive than that, where you start looking into twenty thousand square feet of hard surfaces or less disturbed areas if it's adding hard surfaces. So as a, as a way to mitigate the change of use, and that would be whether this is residential property, whether this is multifamily property, whether this is industrial, if we hit those thresholds, we have to manage post-construction stormwater management. Now, whether that's the addition of a pond, a biofilter, a vegetated wetland, underground storage, there's, there's a number of different things that we have to do to illustrate that. The flow characteristics of a site in a post-construction condition does not exceed the peak flow rate of the existing condition. Within that, there's also infiltration requirements. Should the site be, not be exempt from that. There's water quality components of that. The baseline that we usually use is total suspended solids or TSS, as well as phosphorus if we're in a TMDL, where there's a total maximum daily load. So all of these things are components that we have to design against. And the state regulations prohibit us from changing the regulatory floodplain within the creek by more than point zero zero inches. So we're allowed to have no impact to that. The fact that we would avoid the floodway, that the fact that we would stay beyond the ESAs and out of the fringe areas, and then this site would require post-construction stormwater management, which would be one of those features that we would have to add, is that the amount of water that runs off of it in a peak flow rate today would have to be mimicked in the post-construction condition. Meaning that we'll have a structural improvement that will reduce that. When you look at the surrounding areas and the age of the areas, for the most part, these residential developments don't have those features. And that's because the regulations have changed since the time that there was developed. If, if these subdivisions were developed today, they would need individual pond or other features that would help mitigate and reduce the amount of water that's run off from, from those developments. No different than if this was developed as five single-family homes or three duplexes or whatnot. We wouldn't hit that threshold in which we would have to do stormwater management, even at that level. So almost regardless of what development happens here because of the size and scale cumulative, we would look at having to do that and both meet the floodplain regulations as well as post-construction stormwater.
Okay. And yeah, there's, there's not a lot of room on this to put single-family homes because I measured it today. It comes to about two hundred and fifty-seven feet of buildable frontage, so. Yeah, it's not a lot.
Jared, where do you envision the water going from this facility out to Wabi and getting in the storm sewer there? Or are you going to handle it on-site with a pond, or what are your?
Sure. So we would manage it on-site before discharge. As practical, we would use available storm sewer to discharge. What we really have to look at is where does that water go today? And we look at subwatersheds. So if there's water that's flowing towards Wabi, you know, the objective is to take a comparable amount to Wabi. I believe the ultimate discharge is the same location, just whether it's straight out the backyard or down the street a bit. But in the end of the day, we have to look specifically at where it's being generated and where it's being discharged. But yes, I would say, you know, as practical, we would discharge to Wabi. Being as that, that is a county highway as well. We have county regulations that we have to work with. So we'd have to get working right away and permits from that entity as well. So we're at an early stage. You know, we've looked at the site long enough to know that this is viable from a constructibility. We're obviously here as an early stage for zoning to know whether or not the village supports it. And we feel that the property is set idle for a long time for a reason. It's a challenging site. It's on a busy road. It's across an industrial property. And from a highest best-use standpoint, this is likely that. Also, the individual that purchased this has comparable developments in different communities around the region. And when you look at the product, and Aaron, I don't know if you can jump to the second slide, is that this isn't a multifamily setup that we have here in a, you know, more developed core. Actually, the intent is that it's to be lived as a house, a place for people to go to that don't want a yard, that they don't want that. They have zero entries. They're individual entries. They have private garages. It's low. It's a single-story intentionally. The individual that owns the property doesn't want to come in here and put up a three-story apartment building. He wants a place for people to have an alternate to live. These are set up that they could be converted into condos and sold individually. So then it becomes a owner-occupied scenario. That isn't the intent, and I'm not sharing that because that's necessarily what desire is today, but that's how these are set up. For his properties in Plaski and O'Connell, I mean, there's wait lists six, seven, eight, nine deep for a six-unit building. He has residents that have existed in them since they began, seven, eight years. You know, this is not a high-turnover situation. This is a situation where people want a simpler life. They want their yard taken care of. They want their snow removed. Again, zero entry. They're not fifty-five and older restricted because the age-restricted piece is not is a challenging thing to do. But because of the nature of how they live, that's the mix in the individuals that are utilizing these. And they're not inexpensive. I mean, rents are on the magnitude of seventeen, eighteen hundred, two thousand dollars. And the desire is for them to function similar to his other properties that he's developed in the region. Specifically because that's what he wants to create. You know, coming in here with that high volume, high demand, high density is not right for the neighborhood. But this use fits well and is comparable to that. It integrates into a transitional area between industrial corridor and residential. When you look at the actual development, you know, there's a large waterway and buffering that screen and, you know, is this property visible from the other side of the stream or not? You know, this is a good use for this property. And that's the purpose for the applicant to buy the property and for him to bring, bring this forward to the village.
So I have one question about the water. So you said that you, you cannot have more than zero point zero zero percent of water
Inches increase.
Inches, okay. To leave. So we're going to create, you know, solid structure here. None of that water that goes where this structure is going to be can go into that creek?
No, the water can leave. It cannot exceed the existing condition flow rate. So making up numbers, if, and we do it in cubic feet per second, CFS. If one CFS of runoff is leaving that property today, we're allowed to discharge one CFS
Okay.
in the post-condition. So if it rains here, water is going to leave the site because that's what happens now.
But nothing is going to discharge into the creek?
It very well will discharge the creek.
Yeah.
I would imagine.
But nothing more than what does now today?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Jared, can I ask you a question? The homes that are up on Sunny Hill, or Sunny Creek, and then Wren, how many feet up are they from the level of this property?
Elevation-wise? I don't know if I have that direct answer for you. I could get that, but I don't, I don't know exactly today. Just because I don't know what their heights of their buildings are. All I can do is reference the floodplain where you, if you want to jump back to the map, is that theoretically, wherever the extents of the floodplain are, is that those, that should be an equal elevation on either side of the creek. So in some instances, I would say it's very, very comparable. In other instances, I think the houses continue to go up and are higher.
Then the other question I have, there's a lot of trees on the back end of the property right now. I would assume those will remain there. Those will not be removed or anything?
So where the structure is being placed is largely open. You know, where the center line of the creek is in the area to the north is, it's the full intention to leave that untouched. Frankly, I think if the applicant had his desire, he would work with those property owners to, to arrange a sale and sell them everything on the north side of, of the creek because it's not useful for him in, you know, the concerns about people walking on your property. You know, the creek is a barrier, and if that gives those individuals peace of mind, you know, it's, it's probably more value added to them than it is to, to this development. I know he's talked to one of the individuals on that side who was desiring to do that, is to purchase a portion of the lot on the north side of the creek. And like I said, he's more than willing to do that, should, should those owners be interested.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Has your client considered building single-family there?
He evaluated a number of different scenarios, including single-family. Some of the biggest challenges are that utilities don't actually extend and exist into the property. Sewer and water, I believe, are largely on the south side of Wabi Lane. And the cost to extend the utilities relative to purchase costs, relative to land subdivision, relative to all the things you have to do, make those lots quite expensive given they front Wabi Lane.
Okay, but he's still going to have to do it for a multifamily, so, but what you're saying is he can defer costs because of the multi-units?
Correct. And with a multifamily, you can run a single lateral across and service ten units where an individual house by state regulations need to have independent sewer and water laterals, or at least independent water laterals that are serviced to each parcel.
What, I know you addressed that, there cannot be any additional runoff into the creek post-building. What are the repercussions if it does happen?
I mean, ultimately, we have to get a permit and approval from the village. We have to get a permit and approval from the DNR in order to begin the land development process. Both entities review the report and summary and are then reviewed for compliance to ensure they meet. And then typically, post-construction, we actually go and do an as-built survey of the storm sewer and stormwater infrastructure to illustrate compliance with that code. You know, beyond that, it becomes an enforcement issue. You know, say someone would come and fill that in, right, then it would be up to the village to enforce. Almost no different than if any property extends a patio past where they should, that they should pull a permit. So that it becomes a function of the permit and then compliance beyond that.
Okay. I guess I didn't get a full answer. Maybe Aaron? Maybe, Aaron, you'd be able, if something's not in compliance, what happens on the village's end?
Say, for instance, they start filling into the floodplain or floodway without permits. In that case, we would actually be issuing citations to bring them back into compliance, as well as any kind of post-action rectification would have to happen on that property, basically take any kind of fill that was put in there, take it out, and, and restore the property to its, to what it was previously.
Okay. Thank you.
Have you decided which of the options for handling the excess runoff you're going to use yet? You named like four different things you could do, an underground thing.
Sure. I, I could not tell you exactly what we're going to use. It could be a combination, only from the standpoint that the next step of the process is to, you know, upon, if we're able to be successful on the rezon is to develop detailed engineering plans. What we've done so far is done, I would say, a high-level comprehensive to identify, field identify wetlands on the site to make sure it's constructible, lay out the space needs of, of the site with floodplain, know that there's enough open space to do our stormwater. But then we start to look at it with the details of the design to say, what's the most logical, given soil conditions and availability of storm sewer drainage? So, we don't have that answer today, only from the standpoint that that's addressed at the site plan review process that the village has.
Okay. Any other questions?
Aaron, do we have the size of these two lots? I know the one is very weird shape, but the one is more, what's the width, what's the width of the one right, the west, the west one?
The westernmost is about 90 feet. Eastern one is about, you know, I'd say 150 or so.
You know, this property is really a tough property to develop. I mean, when you look at your memo, it's 6.9 acres and 1.3 can actually be developed. So, there's very little of the property that can be developed, and the residents have some issues on, on the water, which I understand. My suggestion is maybe to take a step back, see what Jared's plans are specifically for the water, get more of a feel for that, and how we're going to move that. You know, talk with the residents. They're concerned about their, you know, their homes flooding from this. I would love to have that addressed, if that's even possible, or how that, you know, if it can come up that high, the creek with the way it is. It's just a tough parcel. I think putting single-family is never going to go there. It's right across from the industrial area. I live up in the Hawthorne area in Vercaderen, and being that close to industrial area is, can be unpleasant at times. We have an issue with noise. We have an issue with smell. And to put some single-family homes down here, I just don't think it's a good place for it. So, I guess I would suggest maybe we just go back a bit and see if we can get maybe some more concrete answers on the water and where it's at, and how we could move this through here with going with a multi-family building.
Can I make a comment?
I would, I would suggest, if you're going to allow the public to speak, then you would need to open the floor again.
Right.
For that.
Correct. So...
This gentleman spoke for a half hour. I've got five minutes, so...
We would have to reopen the floor for the public. That's Robert's rules, not mine. So, I, I agree, I agree, Tracy. I would like, I understand the angst with getting water in your home. It's horrible. It's horrible. And back when, when we had flooding, we all had septic systems, so it was really horrible. So, I, I would like those, if we could somehow address that, and I don't know if we can, but I, I think that would make the residents feel a little calmer. Aaron, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, the proposal is not to do anything in the identified floodplain or floodway. So, it really should not have any impact at all on the, any kind of flooding that would occur in Ashwabanon Creek. As Jared had discussed, it is limited to the pre-construction flow rate into the creek. So, there'd be no additional stormwater entering the creek than what is currently the case.
Okay.
You know, you guys are making this all about water. It's about rental property, ordering rental property.
Okay.
Yeah, I will admit, I, I think my biggest concern is with Mr. Mueller. You're, you're right next to it. You're right on top of it. I get that impact 100%. So, I think we can, you know, we can go back and look at this some more and research, but there, I think it's some sort of a different plan. There is two, there is two viable lots here. There isn't, I get the, the issue with trying to build on them. I get that. I guess it's on Wabi. You live on Wabi, okay?
It's not undesirable at all.
You know, there's, there's, so I...
We have two children that ride up and down this.
So, let's, let's just get back to order a little bit here?
I'm sorry, but we can't, yeah, we need...
I, I understand all that, and so I think we, I do agree with Tracy. I think we need to step back and reconsider all of the different pieces, not just water.
Well, and I would ask the assessor also to get involved in it and see, you know, people have said, oh, I'm going to lose $50,000 of property value. Let's really get what it is. You know, just because you're next to a rental property, is your property really going to go down that much? Let's get the expert to tell us that, and that'll help you be informed as well. So, I think there's just some questions, some valid questions that the residents have come up with, and staff can answer them. They have the answers, and Jared can look into it more, and I think we can get some good answers and feel better about it.
Joel, you...
So, just a couple of quick things. So, we've talked in great detail about the very technical specifications of developing that site. And so, I want to, I want to point out a couple of things, because I think some members from the audience also expressed the same thing. It's really, tonight's discussion is really revolving around land use decisions and rezoning from an R1 to an R3 district. So, that is really what you're tasked with this evening, is make a determination as to whether the use is appropriate for the site. Regardless of this is an R1 or an R3 district, it still needs to meet the technical aspects of developing it. So, at present, the landowner could theoretically build a 15,000-square-foot home in the same manner in which they want to or desire to build a 10-unit or a five individual-unit multi-family development. Okay? So, from a standpoint of developing and the impacts to stormwater, the impacts to the creek, things of that nature are going to be the same regardless of the use. So, the technical aspects need to be met. They do need to follow the requirements of law and permitting. As Jared had described, there's components related to specific village ordinance, there's components specific to DNR mandates, and they need to meet the permit requirements for both. Again, regardless if it's a single-family home, if it's an industrial development or an R3, it's going to have certain mandates that are required under village code and the DNR. So, it really just gets back to that component of land use. So, is the land use appropriate in the view of the village, from the village board's perspective? Because regardless, again, if it's R1 or R3 or IP, it's going to need to meet the technical aspects, and it cannot have a negative impact to the floodway, flood fringe, or the discharge rate of which is present day. So, we, we do know that. So, I, I guess I would advise the board not to really cloud your decision on appropriate land use to technical specifications, because those are going to have to be met regardless of the use. So, it comes down to what is going to be likely the highest and best use for that property? Is it maintained as an R1 district? Or is it in the best interest of the village to rezon it to an R3 district as requested by the applicant for their intended development interests? So, that, that's really what it comes down to. Zoning is, to some respect, largely discretionary. Obviously, it needs to be compatible with the overall comprehensive plan for the village, but you would have to really make a claim as to why this would be incompatible by going from residential to residential, right? So, if this was being proposed to move to like a heavy industrial zoning district, then, then maybe you'd have an argument that it's incompatible, although that could be suspect too, because immediately across the street you have industry. So, it's really, it, it's a discretionary desire as to what you think is going to be the highest and best use for that property. When, if this property were to be rezoned to whatever it would be, R3 or some other use, it would need to go through a site plan process where we would verify and validate that they've met the requirements of the code, not necessarily based on what we perceive to be problem areas, but very technical aspects of meeting mandates under the law. So, again, I just want to reiterate that you really focus more on the use. The technical aspects will be worked out. They have to be worked out as under the, under both municipal and state law. So, those things shouldn't necessarily be a basis for your decision tonight. It's more about the use and what you think is a compatible, appropriate use for that parcel.
Joe, I can't add any more words than what you did. It is about the zoning of the property tonight. We kicked the can around, everything that could be butky or what. John, I never was in a meeting on Cormier, but I've been around a little while. This crowd is the largest crowd I've seen in 13 years of opposing something. We listened to our constituents, residents. I thought it was a good plan to put it there. I toured your neighborhood. You people can talk water all you want. I am not going to step on that at all, because you live there. But I think for once, even though I think the project is good, the constituents got to be heard, because I've never seen this many people here. We've had, even the hotel on the, on O'Naita Street never brought this many people, and we approve that. But this one here, I think we got to think about. So, that's my opinion.
Okay. Does anybody have any more comments or a motion?
I would just like to say that I do agree with Gary. I mean, obviously, everybody opposes it. I would like everybody to kind of think why you're opposing it, though. Mary, right down by where you live, there's a brand-new development. That's all rental, and how many problems do we have?
None.
None. Chief, in our newer developed areas, do we have typically issues that arise on a daily basis with these rentals?
No, you know, and in the newer areas, the newer rentals, those properties are usually occupied by those folks that take pride in what they're, where they're living. So, we don't normally have problems in those.
Yep.
So, I, I agree with what you're saying, not necessarily in those, those higher rental properties.
I agree.
My other comment would be, to think about who your neighbors might be. It might be one of you as you age and can no longer get up your steps and you don't want to leave your neighborhood. This could be where you move to. But again, I, I mean, you guys are speaking. You definitely don't want it, so I would, I would stand with you guys, but I just urge you to kind of think about where you're, where you're going with this. It is a very good development for Ashwabanon.
Is there another chance for the public to speak on the matter?
We, you guys...
I mean, now that I've listened to what's been said, I may have other comments that relate to this here in some background. I live on Wabi, too.
I would make a motion to open the floor back up to the public to have a discussion.
So, after developer doesn't speak anymore, Chris is absolutely right. You need to have a motion to second and then vote to see if you want to hear from the public again on the same subject.
Okay. So, does anybody have any more questions for Jared?
I do not.
No. No.
Do you have anything else you'd like to say, Jared?
Yeah, I think, I mean, the only thing I'd leave you with is there's been, you know, discussions about property value, and I believe if you explore and you look at published studies by enormous universities, that diversity in housing stock is important. The ability to live throughout your times, time span is important to have in neighborhoods. I think that there's, I've struggled, because I looked and we, we do a lot of multi-family development throughout the state of Wisconsin, and I've found, and if I haven't looked hard enough, forgive me, but there's no study that says that my property value is going to drop because I'm adjacent to multi-family, especially when you look at proximity and nature of it. We have a lot of developers that work, and they develop multi-family and single-family, and they intentionally put them together, in which they built the same house in, internal to a development, and one directly adjacent to multi-family at a large, much larger scale than this. And there's no discernible difference in sale price of that, that unit. You know, I look at where, where I built and have a home, you know, 300 feet through a woods conservancy like this, there's 70 units of multi-family that were built. The house that a Buzet just sold for 850,000. The one next to it sold for 750,000. If the concern is relative to that, it becomes, I think, a function of adjusting your code to address management, because I think management of these units is more important than the fact that they're multi-family. I lived in an apartment for 15 years of my life, and I think I'm a pretty good person. So, when you start looking at the decision that the board makes, and if we need additional time to look at some of these things, we're happy to do that. But I think too, maybe to echo Joel's position, is that the technical pieces will come. It's more of a philosophy of this use, and the nature of this use is appropriate for the village. And I think the duration of time the lot has stood and the nature of the development that's desired about forward is comparable and works. So, but I'll leave you with that. Happy to answer any other questions that come up, and just want to really look at the, I guess, the facts of some of the published documentation that exists out there and, and review that if, if we're making a decision based on potential drop in property values or crime or things along that nature. So, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. I need a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Now, Chris, did you want to make a motion to open the floor?
I would make a motion to open the floor to the public.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a, and a second to open the floor to the public?
Are we going to keep same rules, five minutes?
Well, there's not necessarily a certain set of rules right now, but the board can impose a time restriction for each person to discuss.
I would like to see that.
How long are we going to kick this can?
Right.
You know, we know where it's going to go. We, we need more information. These people want to know more information. Whatever's going to be said isn't going to help our decision right now. So, I move we don't open the floor.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Chris had asked about the five minutes, but...
You can, you can impose time restrictions on each person if you choose. Whether that, that is, it's up to the board's discretion, and then after that, you can vote on the motion itself.
Okay. Do you want to put a five-minute restriction on it?
I will put...
Two minutes.
I will put a two-minute restriction on it.
Okay. Does the second have a two-minute...
So, the motion's going to be to open the floor to the public to speak on this item again, with a two-minute restriction for each individual.
Correct. Does everybody understand? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Okay, motion carried. Sir, could, you could please come up and state your name and address for the record?
I can do this in one and a half minutes. I know. Figured as much. My name's Kirk Kinzgrab, 1346 Wabi Lane. So, I'm just having deja vu to the Ashbrook Court development. Like, I can throw a stone and probably reach that, and I could throw a stone and probably hit this one. And I remember being in this meeting years ago when they said that that wasn't going to work as a residential R1. It had to be, they were looking to do commercial. And I think those lots sold like immediately. I think that there's some validity with sticking with R1 and maybe landscaping it a little bit and making it nice and getting a home or two in there, but the multi-family I'm opposed to.
Okay.
I don't think it's a water issue. I think it's a zoning issue, like the guy that left.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to speak for two minutes?
Tell me to restate, Mary?
Yes, please.
John Dalzke, 1331 Ren Lane. Couple of quick things. When we came down and looked at the maps here at Village Hall, we were told, and there's a purple section, we were told that that was a retention pond or a retention basin. That's what we were told.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, that's...
I asked that question today. That's the only reason why I know it's not.
The other thing we were told is that this was a five-unit building. I believe I heard it's 10. There's a significant difference between 10 and 5. As far as the desirability to live on Wabi, the gentleman who was next to the project, I know did not build that home. He bought it. Ted and Ida Pampern lived on Wabi. It was sold. Ashbrook was developed off of Wabi. So, to live on Wabi and have first residential on Wabi is desirable and viable. In, in terms of, of the property that's there, there was illegal land filling going on there. on that years ago. Some of it was done undercover of darkness. I know there's somebody here who could address that if they're willing to do it, but, but that is part of the problem. And unfortunately, and it's not these people, but the village board did nothing about it. And it, and it was brought to their attention. So again, going back to the fact that we faced this 20-some years ago, we got an affirmation from the board at that time that this would remain residential. The people that, that bought this land knew it was single residential. Now, if they, they believe it's not viable, that's not my problem. They bought with the understanding it was single residential, like the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Sir, if you'd like to state your name and address for the record?
Roy Gertz, 1221 Sunny Creek Drive. This map is beautiful, okay? It illustrates where the floodplain is. As you look at the floodplain going around the, the property that's going to be developed, that's not natural. If, look at the floodplain on the other side of the creek as it goes along. Look at the floodplain before and after it. You can see that this property has been filled in to even allow it to be R1 or R2 or whatever you want to develop it into. So I don't know. Look back in your permitting process. Did you permit someone to fill this in so it could be developed into R1? Because that would have happened in the last 50 years. So.
It happened in the sidewalk. It just showed up.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I, I can't address those items because I don't have the, I wasn't here that many years ago. So.
Beautiful map based on what's, what's there now, but that's not what was there 15 years ago.
Well, I know. I know.
There was a pumpkin patch where this thing was that was probably about eight feet below the grade of Wabi Lane.
Move to close the floor. Second.
Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. What's your druthers? Want to make a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to table it for further information.
Second.
Second, Doc.
Motion and a second to table this item for further information. All those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay.
Appreciate everybody coming in and giving input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any notice again about the visit to be on the agenda?
Yeah, it'll, when it goes on the agenda.
It'll, it'll be on the next village board agenda for the fourth Tuesday of July.
Yeah, which I believe is the 23rd.
27. 23rd. Okay.
Yeah. There you go. Thank you. Okay. 10B, consider discuss act on a resubmitted site plan review request for an addition to Nelson Communications, Inc. at 645 Mike McCarthy Way, parcel VA-58-5. Aaron.
Why don't we just, why don't we just give it a minute? Aaron, why don't we just give it a minute?
I don't disagree, but if they're all against it. I pulled into the parking lot today and sat there and it was impressive. Got to say that. It's actually nice to see them.
I don't know what their problem is, though. They clearly get along with all of the neighbors.
Okay, Aaron.
All right. So the requested site plan does come to village board because it is within the sports entertainment district. The site plan is at 645 Mike McCarthy Way, parcel VA-56-5. This is Nielsen Communications towards the eastern end of Mike McCarthy Way, proposing what a 3,000-square-foot addition out the back of the existing building. This was previously approved through village board, but after one year, site plan approval does expire if construction is not commenced. So they did pause the project at the time, went longer than a year, so therefore it's going back through Site Plan Review Committee and Village Board. So in brief, again, 3,000-square-foot addition out the back of the existing building. In terms of the expansion you see here primarily, addition for some additional bays for service. In terms of the recommended conditions of approval, all new metal wall panels are to utilize fully concealed fasteners. All new metal wall panels are to include a minimum three-foot measuring wainscote. Screen any new or larger replacement rooftop or ground mounted mechanically units visible from the property boundaries or public right-of-way. Conventional curb pan or rolled curbing is required for any new parking or driveline areas. And then the catch-all meet all applicable requirements of 17-2-200 Ashwabanam Municipal Code. Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission did recommend approval of the site plan with staff conditions.
I'll move to approve the site plan with staff conditions. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the site plan with staff conditions. All those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10C, presentation on 2023 fiscal year audit and annual comprehensive financial report.
All right. So we have our auditors from Baker Tilly, John Rader, who is the managing director, and Logan Connors, the senior auditor, are here to present the findings from the audit. I'll leave it at that. I'm going to hand out the highlight page. It's in your packet, but it'll be easier just to follow on paper in addition to the other document I gave you. So I'll give it to them to go through the audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And thank you for having us here tonight. It's nice to be here. And thank you for introducing Logan. Logan has not been to this meeting before, but he's been a big part of the audit for the last several years, so I'm glad he can join me. And I'm going to give him all the hard questions, too. So before I just jump into the materials, and I'm going to spend the bulk of it going through these financial highlights that I think you all have a copy of here that's being passed out. I just want to mention a couple of things. We just issued finals last week, so that's similar to what we've done in the past. And at this point, Greg either has or is in the process of submitting your, your financial statements to the Government Finance Officer Association, GFOWA, for what will hopefully be the 39th consecutive year of that award. So that's a long streak, and that shows you have really good financial reporting in the village, which is important, not just for the audit, but also for budget time and for department heads and just monitoring where you're at throughout the year. I do want to mention one thing about the financial statements is we've issued what we call an unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion, a lot of boilerplate language, but it basically means your financial statements are prepared according to the accounting rules or GAAP. And that means all the accounting pronouncements, and they're up to about 100 now, have been adhered to, and all the numbers are materially correct as we've audited them. The other document that we issue is the reporting and insights or audit results. It goes by a couple of different names. You'll have a paper copy of that, I believe. And I won't walk through it, but it points out a number of different things. It says what our responsibilities are as your auditor. Sometimes there's a misunderstanding of what that is, and we're really GAAP auditors, just what I mentioned. Areas we focus on during the course of the audit, pretty straightforward areas such as receivables and taxes and payables and leases and things like that. There's three or four pages of required communications in there. Those would be things like if we came across fraud during the course of the audit, if we had disagreements with management, any of those kind of contentious areas. There's nothing like that in that report, and that's, that's been the case ever since we've been your auditors. New accounting rules are mentioned in there. There's a few of them that are around the corner, two that'll have to be implemented next year. I don't think they're going to change the amounts that you've been reporting, but there's one in particular regarding compensated absences that we'll evaluate with Greg. But the area in that other report that probably draws the most attention is the internal control matters. And there's one point in there for the village. That's the same point we have for almost all of our governmental clients, and it's the fact that we prepare your financial statements. We do that as a service for so many of our governments because they just don't have the resources. If you just do it once a year, that's a, that's a hard, that's a high hurdle to get over with all these different accounting rules. So we do it. Greg has a very good, solid understanding of GAAP. He reviews that report closely. But again, the auditing rules in this case, if we do that, we're supposed to have this finding. Now, I will point out there are two findings from previous reports that are related to segregation and duties, like independent review of bank reconciliations and journal entries and a couple of other areas where the village definitely strengthened their controls this year, and we tested those. And so those have been resolved. So that's a nice step forward in that, in that area. Okay, so that's about it on that report. I am going to walk through these financial highlights, and I'm going to start on page one. It looks like a bar graph. And there's some light blue amounts on there and some black ones. The light blue are the 2023, and black is obviously the previous year of 2022. As you look at, the, the first two pages are focused on your general fund. The general fund, as you know, is your primary operating fund of the village. And so one of the metrics, it's commonly called out as fund balance levels. And you break it down into these five different categories, I kind of think of as buckets, that are allowable under governmental fund balance reporting. And I'm going to start at the bottom. There's a very small amount, just 23,000, that's a non-spendable. That's just inventories. Okay, you can't spend inventories. So the accounting rules say you have to set that aside. You move your way up, and we have about 159,000 in restricted. Those are externally restricted, whether it's statutory or grants or, or donate, donate donors, I should say, that type of nature, they have to be set aside for that purpose. And then a brand-new category this year, committed, 600,000, just over 600,000, and that's been set aside, or as we say, committed, for retirement funds. And that was a great financial move of the village to take some available funds and set that aside and try to fund that so there's not that volatility that hits your general fund, because that's one thing you want to avoid. So again, that's brand-new. Nothing in assigned. Everything else rolls up into the unassigned. Very minimal change there, even though you were able to set aside that 600,000. Overall, you can see on the, about two-thirds of the way down, a very summarized income statement there. Your fund balance went up on the actual column, as you can see, 400,000 for the general fund. You had planned or budgeted to spend that down by 225,000. You got there because your revenues came in about 1.7 over what you budgeted. Most of that, about a million of that, was from investment income, and we have seen that everywhere this year, especially the fixed income securities in your portfolio took a hit in 2021, 2022, and then they rebounded in the market in 2023. And those are unrealized gains and losses, but you still have to recognize that in your financial statements. So again, 1.7 over in revenues. Expenditures were also over, though, and they were over by just, just shy of 1.1 million. The details of all that, the expenditures as well, the revenues are in the back of the financials, so I won't, I won't walk you through that, but pages 50 to 53. In addition, Greg does a really nice job of, of discussing those changes in the management discussion analysis. It's upfront in front of your financial statements. It's about 10 pages. It's like an executive summary. I've read a lot of these over all my years, and Greg does an outstanding job on that. So you can look at some of that if you're interested in how you got to that, to the ending fund balance. If we take those amounts and we go to the next page, page two, you can see how it plays out against the village's fund balance policy. And it's great, one, that you have a policy and you've adhered to it for the last five years, because it says that you're trying to maintain a minimum of 20% of what you budgeted in the next, next year. Okay, so 2024 in this case, obviously. So at the end of '23, you are at 27%. So it has been declining each of these last five years, but you are still above your policy. And I want to reemphasize, even though it went down a little bit this year, you also set aside 600,000 for these group benefits for retirements. So no concerns there. Other places we audit, those blue dots you can see are low 40%. And yeah, so that's about it on, on that page. If we flip to page three, this page and the next focus on debt. Page three takes a statutory analysis of debt. As we know, municipal is our limited 5% of the equalized value. That's that black line that's been charted out there. So you're up to 180 million. That's about a 15% increase from last year. And then the red line is your general obligation debt. That went down about 6.9 million. So because of the increase in value and the decrease in your debt, you were, at the end of the year, utilizing 32% of your debt, of your debt limit or debt capacity. That was 42% last year, so that went down about 10%. Okay. About two-thirds of the way down, you can see the types of debt you have outstanding. So even those 180, I'm sorry, 58 million of outstanding GO debt, a slice of that, about 1.8, is actually being paid by your utility fund. So that's, even though it's general obligation, it is being paid for by those user charges. And then you can see the CDA has the 109 million outstanding. That's been going down steadily, about 2.9 or so million a year. And that compensated abstances, that's what we were just talking about, how the village is starting to, to fund that. And that sits at 3.3 million. Page four is looking at how much do you pay in debt service during the year? So principal and interest. And the numbers are, again, partway down on this, but you can see you paid 8.1 in principal and 2 million in interest, so about 10.2. And you can see how that's charted out. We generally recommend around 20%. You're up to about 28.9% of your governmental expenditures going towards debt service. So a little bit higher than we normally recommend. It jumped this year, though, because you paid off a bond anticipation note in a van. And so that's why you saw the big increase in the principal. But in most years, you're, you're in the lower 20%. Again, those black dots are other places that we audit of similar size based on population in Wisconsin. And then these last three pages are focused, each one is on your three different utilities. Water utility is obviously the one that is regulated by the PSC. They set this authorized rate. You had new rates that were implemented or approved, I should say, in 2022, and they're being phased in. Because of those new rates, you can see this green line, which are your revenues, have, have gone up, especially in the last year as those, as a full year. It is also in 2023, you can see the green line exceeds the black, which are expenses. So for the first time over these five years, you have a positive operating margin. So revenues went up about 9.7% and expenditures actually went down just a tad. The unrestricted reserves is another metric. It gives a kind of another way of looking at the fiscal health. We generally recommend three months of unrestricted reserves, and this is really cash, for operating needs, just like we, you know, need a little bit in our checking account to pay, pay certain things that come through. But then another 12 months or so for unanticipated or kind of routine capital needs that you're not financing with debt. So it's about 15 months. This fund has typically been below that, but no real concerns. It's sitting at just shy of nine months, and it's been able to manage that over the last five years with minimal debt. The investment in capital, all these funds are very capital-intensive, a lot of plant goes into it, and the balance sheet has a lot of value on it. And this analysis takes a look at, well, how do we, how have we paid for that? How have we paid for it through earnings or debt? And we generally recommend trying to maintain about 50% through earnings, and you're at 90%. So no concerns there. Sewer utility, similar analysis without the PFC. As you can see, the expenses have exceeded the revenues for the last few years. They're up about 6% from the prior year. That's primarily been driven by the purchase treatment charges that flow through here from the city. Revenues are also up, but just by 2%. Unrestricted reserves in this fund are a little bit slimmer operating, so 6.4 months. Again, we would generally recommend closer to 15. But on the positive side, this fund has no outstanding debt, so it's all been through earnings. So it certainly has a capacity if there are future capital needs. And then lastly, the stormwater, positive operating, so revenues have exceeded expenses for each of the last five years. No concerns there, and that's kind of reflected in those unrestricted reserve amounts. You can see you're up to 33 months. This is not unusual to see this, these type of numbers in a stormwater utility, especially if it's not generally financing things or maintenance and capital due to issuance of debt, of which you can see at the bottom, there is no outstanding debt. Those reserves will build and build, and then you have some capital needs and it goes back down again. That's, again, that's kind of the cycle of stormwater utilities. So I went through that kind of quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? I don't. Looks like the village, the staff keeps us in very good financial order.
They do. And I was going to end on that note. When we come in for the audit, Logan could certainly attest to this, everything's ready to go, and we really appreciate that, because we don't always see that, and we do ask for a lot of documents, our team, and then we have a separate utility team that comes in as well. And Greg and his staff do a great job of preparing, and not only that, but the records are really clean. We just don't have many of any entries each year, so it's really great.
Good.
Kudos to you, Greg.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you to you and your team.
When he's not working on the audit, he's working on the budget.
Sounds like a perfect world.
Okay, any other questions or comments? This is just information only, so thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I am going to abstain from item 10D, so Gary will take over.
Item 10B is going to be the considered discussed action on temporary premise extension for the Green Bay Moose Lodge 801. Joel, you got that one, or Patrick?
Chris.
Chris, okay.
So the Green Bay Moose Lodge is requesting a temporary premise extension of their Class B combination license to include the vacant lot at 854 Morris Avenue, which is contiguous to their existing premise at 846 Morris Avenue. The purpose of the extension is to accommodate their annual lodge family picnic on September, July, sorry, on Sunday, July 14, 2024. Attached is a map showing where the Moose Lodge is seeking to temporarily extend their premise. Public Works and Protection Committee approved unanimously, and Lee is in the audience if you have any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Madam President.
Thank you, Lee.
Thanks, Lee.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Trustee Paul, for doing that. Okay, number 10E, Consider Discuss Act on Badger State Brewing Company, LLC, producer full-service retail sales application for Odyssey Climbing Jim's Music Nights. Chris?
The Division of Alcohol Beverages is a new division within the Department of Revenue. The AB 105 is a new form from the Division of Alcohol Beverages. In this instance, because this form does have many different options, but in this instance, Badger State Brewing is requesting to have their mobile tap truck parked outside the front entrance of Odyssey Climbing Jim parallel to Mike McCarthy Way on July 25, August 22, and September 20, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. This is an outdoor event only. Beverages will be consumed on-premise outside of the Odyssey building. The Village Board only denies or gives approval. It does not grant the license. So the following questions need to be answered. Will the municipality limit the scope of alcohol beverages offered for sale? And in this instance, they're only requesting beer. Will the municipality impose any requirements or restrictions for the full-service retail outlet? And describe municipal restrictions indicated in questions one or two above. And the village, once the Village Board gives their approval or denial, the AB 105 is sent back to Badger State Brewing, who will then, if approved, forward it to the Division of Alcohol Beverages. The Division of Alcohol Beverages gives final approval and issues a permit. So this is all new to all of us, so do you have any questions?
I will abstain from voting on this item.
Does public safety have any concerns with having a beer truck out on the... I mean, I think it sounds like fun, but...
I mean, as long as you're climbing and you're sober, it'd be fine, but... No, we don't have any concerns on our end. It's a limited time from 5 to 9, so shouldn't have to worry about any noise issues. Hopefully, you know, people are, again, are being responsible, especially in that area, so...
And I just do want to say that it looks like there might be some changes to this, so you might not see this anymore. Well, except for an ordinance. It looks like the Department, the Division of Alcohol Beverages, might be allowing the municipality to allow staff to approve this, not Village Board, which is huge, because it'll be a huge time saver. And then we'll also be able to maybe put a fee on it, because right now, we cannot do that.
They're always changing things.
Chris, when you, if you get, if it stays within the committee or your department, you can grant it and they can continue on with their process rather than waiting to come to the Village Board for approval.
Correct.
Which is a time saver for the customer.
Kind of like a picnic, picnic permit.
Yeah, okay, very good.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Odyssey Climbing Jim's Music Night with Badger State Brewing Company for three dates. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried with one abstention. Okay, 10F, Consider Discuss Act on the Special Event Application for Festival Foods Turkey Trot. Chris, this will be a very busy day down there.
Yes. A request has been made for approval of the Festival Foods Turkey Trot road closures. Public Safety has approved the route attached. This event is happening on Thursday, November 28, 2024, which is also Thanksgiving and also Packer Game Day. I see Marla is online, if you have any questions.
The Packer game's not until 7:20, though.
Correct.
This will be done...
Public Safety is fine.
Yeah.
With it.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Special Event for Festival Foods Turkey Trot. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10G, Consider Discuss Act on Application for Green Bay Packers 5K Run-Walk Special Event.
I can cover this one.
Okay.
I think Chris was out of the office when this one came in. The Green Bay Packers are hosting their annual 5K Run-Walk Special Event. This is usually an event that is used to kind of kick off the training camp, family night events at Lambeau Field at the beginning of their season. They have submitted their request. The request is consistent with prior years, as far as the activities and the events that are included as part of the event. The route has been pretty much unchanged from prior years, and it does involve the closure of a collector's street, which then requires Village Board approval per policy. It should be noted that the Green Bay Packers had just recently submitted their application, which is inconsistent with Village policy. That does require 90 days prior to the event date. This has been kind of their standard, I guess, is submitting this in June or July each year for an event that happens at the end of July. So the Village Board has approved it in the past, even though it's outside of the policy window of 90 days. It's certainly your discretion to enforce policy or to approve the event.
Same old comment I always give on these runs. Why is it in Ashwabanon and disrupting our constituents on getting in and out of these?
I would say, Gary, that Ashwabanon is a highly attractive community.
There we go, sure to quote it.
We say it's always beautiful day in Ashwabanon, and it's reflected by the number of people that want to go.
Then we're going to have an Ashwabanon run, not a Green Bay run.
There you go.
I'd move to approve and maybe let the Packers remind them of the 90 days.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Packers 5K Run-Walk Special Event and let them know about the 90-day timeframe. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10H, Consider Discuss Act on an Initial Resolution Number R 6-2-24 to Vacate Business Center Court. Aaron?
All right, thank you. I will share my screen again to give a little geographic perspective on the proposed street vacation. All right, so this is, Business Center Court is a platted but never-developed cul-de-sac off of Packerland Drive that, there you go, that initially was to provide access to the three lots indicated immediately surrounding the cul-de-sac. As noted, that was never constructed, because those lots did not sell. Multi-Pond America approached the CDA to purchase those lands for their new corporate headquarters. The CDA did agree to sell those parcels to the, to Multi-Pond America. And as part of the development agreement, we do need to vacate, or formally vacate, Business Center Court in order for them to combine those parcels and then locate their new headquarters on that property. So again, this is the initial resolution to vacate, basically starting the process and paper chase timeline for us to hopefully take care of this with a final resolution at the end of August. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We knew this was coming in front of us. I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 10I, Consider Discuss Act on the Wisconsin DNR Urban Forestry Inflation Reduction Act Grant Resolution. Tim, also known as Rex.
Rex is filling in for Tim. Tim took a look at the length of the agenda and just asked me if I wanted to.
Smart.
All right, in a nutshell, I'll just try and simplify it. The feds have the Inflation Reduction Act funding. They've kicked it down to the different states. The state of Wisconsin has given some to the DNR to beautify and improve our tree canopy and our trees in disadvantaged areas. So what is our disadvantaged areas? In Ashwabanon, we don't have a lot of them. However, some areas of zone, I think wards one and three, are considered technically with some income levels, you know, it would qualify for this. So what this is doing is Tim's done a grant application. We need a resolution approving us to apply for it. And basically, it is a no-match funding. It's, the people that get it, it's, I want to say it's free money, but it's not costing anything, the full amount, whatever we would be getting, we'd be going to it. We wouldn't have to match anything with it. I don't know what our chances are of getting it. I know, for instance, the city of Milwaukee probably is going to get a fair amount of it, and I don't know how much is going to be divvied up into other areas, but you won't know unless you try. So an application has been filled out. We're going to be sending it in tomorrow if it's approved tonight, and that's why we need the resolution to send it in.
Never say no on free money. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the application for the, or the resolution for the Urban Forestry Inflation Reduction Act Grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10J, Consider Discuss Act on Request for Proposals, RFP of Architectural and Engineering Services to Complete a Municipal Facilities Condition Assessment and Space Utilization Study. Joel?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. As recall, back in April of this year, the Village Board approved staff to solicit proposals to complete and perform a facility condition assessment for three village-owned facilities, including Village Hall, the Public Safety section of Village Hall, the Public Works Garage with various storage facilities, as well as Public Safety Station Number Two off of Pioneer Drive. Village staff had solicited proposals following the April meeting and received several proposals from qualified firms, of which those firms have been vetted and scored based on several criteria within a rubric. Staff, the overall proposals were due to the village last week. Staff has, or two weeks ago, excuse me, staff went through and evaluated those firms and are proposing the ability to interview three of the firms that were submitted for consideration, based on the timing of when our meetings occur with the Village Board and our ability to actually coordinate and schedule interviews with these three qualified firms. We are seeking board approval to interview the three firms and then get authorization to select one of those three firms from the proposal set. Overall, the proposals ranged in pricing between $48,000 and $401,000. That's a pretty very, it's a very large range. Certainly, we're not certain as to why that is. I'm guessing a lot of times when you see ranges that high, it's usually, it's, we'll throw a number in there, and if they don't get any proposals and the village is willing to entertain it, they'll go ahead and do it. All three proposals that we are asking for permission from the board to interview are all under budget. The overall budget for this project is $170,000. So the low range would be $48,000, up to $148,770. So again, the three finalists that we had scored, we included in your packet their proposals for your review, and so we're seeking direction and action from the Village Board to conduct those interviews and then select a qualified firm.
So this is just an okay to spend the money on those three to find out which one is going to give you the best deal.
And to pick the right one, too. Yeah, essentially, you're saying that go ahead and interview these three. If you don't want to do three, then certainly you can provide that direction, but from those three, we would pick one, and then that one firm would conduct the study.
Yeah, I'll move to authorize the staff to enter an agreement with a qualified consultant to complete the architectural and engineering services to complete a municipal facilities condition assessment and space utilization study.
Wow.
A second. I have one question under discussion. What do you think about having a Village Board member sit on the committee that's interviewing, and maybe someone from the Public Works Board could sit on that interview committee?
Yeah, if that's the direction that the board wishes. We do have some interviews tomorrow. Now, those ones are going to be scheduled via Teams, so we could theoretically record those meetings and provide that information. There is another meeting scheduled for next week, Monday, I believe, which is an in-person meeting, so we can certainly entertain that, or if you'd like, since Mary is in the office most days, you know, we could have Mary participate in those discussions as well. Just so the board is aware, from a staff perspective, we have seven individual members that are evaluating the proposals. We have two individuals from Public Safety, Chief Yule, Commander Murphy, three individuals from Public Works, Brian Rickert, Steve Burr, Lee Vanen, Elson, and then to add a different perspective and to make sure we're being appropriate with money, Greg is involved in the conversation as well as myself. So there are kind of a broad perspective of evaluators, but we certainly...
I would like to see just staff do this. I think that's staff's role. I do not think that that's the role of our boards.
I agree.
We'd give visions, so...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. My paper here. To recommend Village Board authorized administration to enter into an agreement with a qualified consultant to complete the municipal facilities condition assessment and space utilization study. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just curious, your scorecard, was cost factored into your scores?
So cost was a specific component of the rubric, so you can see, I just want to pull it up here. Let me get it, so I can actually read it. Yes, so cost was one of the components of that, and so you're seeing the composite score from each evaluator, but within that composite score, cost was definitely a very, very specific factor. So generally speaking, if they met budget, they were kind of, it was a score of one through five. If they met budget, it was a three. If they were above, you know, below budget, if you will, the expense was below $170,000, they might have went up to a four. Obviously, the individual firm that came in with a cost of $48,000 was scored a five. So if that gives you kind of an understanding of the consistency.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10K, Consider Discuss Act on Ordering Amenities for New Park on Element Way. Rex?
So, the park on Element Way, we've been working with Rettler and Associates on the master plan. I know this came to the Village Board, just to prove the master plan in general at the last meeting that we had here. So what you have in front of you now is, again, that master plan as well as a list of costing. We've worked with Rettler quite intensely to get the costs down to where it is. A lot of the work is going to be done by village crews, so it's not like you're going to see a park come up, spring up within a week or two. It's going to be... come up, spring up within a week or two. It's going to be as village crews can do it. We've already started working on a number of items. We've tore out a lot of the asphalt. We've removed all the gravel on the facility. We've tore out some of the dilapidated fencing that's there as well as removing some, some, a lot of old buckthorn and, quite honestly, several piles of debris that were along the southern fence line. So we've done all this ourselves, tried to clean it up as it is. So what you have in front of you is an estimate by Retler on what some of these individual costs are to get this park going and what it will take. Some of the items, obviously, that we need to purchase, such as the playground equipment, probably have an eight-week turnaround for manufacturing process at a minimum. So what we're looking for tonight is any discussion and then action on moving forward with the costing of the park as development as presented tonight on this paper. It did go to park board last week. Several items were discussed and it, it passed with a 7-0 vote.
Rex, we had a conversation at the ribbon cutting for the bridge in Ashwabana Park. The few people that were sitting around me, they kind of knew a little bit about it. And they, they thought it was a very nice project. The only thing we did question on it, there was an item that you were kind of doing but not finishing. And I need something to do with a toilet or something, or a bubbler?
Well, we're, we're putting a drinking fountain in.
Putting a fountain in? Okay, then was it something to do with a, a toilet or?
So the toilet is just going to be a slab on, on the southern end, on the southeast corner of the park. And the discussion was whether we want a toilet in there permanently, like for the whole summer, or whether a toilet's appropriate just for like during the Packer season. Because there'll be people parking around and probably using this park, such as the other parks, for pre-Packer game hanging out. That's what they do in a lot of the parks around Lambo Field. So the question was whether or not, basically, it, it wasn't anything with the park design, but more or less of when we wanted that porta potty in the park.
Okay, all right, understanding now. Okay, I don't have a problem with the porta potty. I, I thought it was more of a permanent thing than a porta potty, so. All right. I don't have any problem with this. Move to prove your project to move ahead.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to order the Element Way Park amenities. Do we need the $106,000 in that?
Yeah, the, but the amenities are $106,000, and then the rest of the items are, are there. So what's going to wind up happening is with this approval of the general idea of what things are going to cost, we'll be meeting, we already have a meeting set up with Retler in hopes that it's approved tonight. So that's going to be tomorrow morning, and then they're going to start putting bid specs together so we can get that out to bid and, and actually see what things are going to run us.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions?
No questions, but I just kind of find it ironic that we're taking care of the animals in the park as far as watering them and going to the bathroom, but we're ignoring the humans. But anyway.
Good point.
It's a good project.
Yeah. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.
10L, Consider Discuss Act on the Reallocation of Water Utility Funds for the Design of a Mono Tower in Place of the Babcock Standpipe. Brian Rickert.
All right, so in front of you guys tonight, you'll see that we had originally anticipated in designing the removal of the Babcock standpipe in 2024, but the actual demolition to take place in 2025. With that, ultimately, when we started digging into it a little bit further, we were made aware that there are several cell phone providers on that standpipe. And some of their contracts or lease agreements go through 2027. So with that, you know, ultimately, removing that standpipe isn't very feasible. We did dig into the option or opportunity of installing a mono tower. Essentially, that's just a single-piece tower that the cell phone providers would be able to hang their antennas on. Cost of that mono tower or, or monopole would be anywhere from $200,000 to $250,000. Of course, we would need to design for that and get that permitted. So I'm looking for is just a reallocation of funds. We did have a cost savings across various of our inspections on our water towers and reservoirs. They came in far more competitive than we expected, so there was a $64,000 savings there. Looking to potentially reallocate those funds to support the design of the mono tower in place of the standpipe, which would essentially allow for that $100,000 worth of revenue that we bring in annually to essentially hopefully be a long-term investment at that location.
Okay. I had some questions for Brian that I did ask him before the meeting, but I just wanted to bring them up here. The mono tower would be put in for the three cell towers or cell providers that are up there right now. Their contracts end in 2027, correct?
Correct.
So my concern is if we don't get a commitment for them to continue their contract with us, we've spent $200,000 to $300,000 on a tower that we may not have contracts for after 2027. The other thing I was asking Brian, if we use it at all, if the village has any need for that tower, that we would put anything on it that we would need as for village services? And he said there was maybe a repeater that.
Correct, yep, a repeater for a SCADA system. So essentially, our sewer and water system works out from an automated system referred to as SCADA. So there's just a repeater at that location. So essentially, just an antenna.
And I don't know if the contracts, and Patrick, Brian wasn't sure, if we would just discontinue the contracts that we have existing right now and not put up the tower, if there would be a penalty at all for the village for doing that on those contracts with the ones that are on there right now? And the other thing I was thinking of, we have such a need for lots for new homes in Ashwabana. And Brian said there's really nothing else that would be saved on that site. And that could be a residential lot, a single-family home, that the village could potentially sell and have another lot in the village and, and make a little revenue on. So those are just some of the things when I was looking at the financial end of it to see if there were some other options or if this was really the best way to go with this.
There would be no penalty, Tracy, if we discontinued the cell tower, like antenna themselves, with each provider, as long as the contract is up. I'm pretty sure, and I don't know, Brian might have looked at them more recent than I have. I, I don't know when the lease is up, but I know, because there's so many different ones with each provider in, in the, in the village, a lot of them are expanded based on like terms. So if we agreed to, I don't know, five-year terms, five, five-year terms, if that makes sense, right? So like 25 years' worth, right? So every five years, a new term hits. We are contractually obligated for that next 25 years for that amendment, that lease, for that specific provider itself. So if they are up to date and they do expand that long, then it's a, it's a really good investment as in keeping them on, because Brian's right, we do generate a lot of revenue from, from the cell towers. But if they are up and the board doesn't wish to continue negotiating or to extend those leases, then yeah, we could take them, theoretically take them down. It's not entered into new, new lease, you know, penalty-free.
I guess, I guess my question would be, I don't know what the carriers are that are up there, but I would assume that they're up there because they, they're, the residents over in that area have needs for that carrier. I just remember when we put that monopole up on Shady, it was because, I believe it was Cellcom or US Cellular, the people's calls were getting dropped. So that's why they requested to put that monopole up there with the, the towers on. So that would be my question. I, you know, if somebody has Verizon and all of a sudden we discontinue the contract with Verizon, are they going to lose some of their reception? I, you know.
Yeah, and that could, I mean, Brian, there's a standpipe there now, and that was my question. So we have a contract with them through 2027. Could that standpipe remain where they are right now and fulfill that contract if there's, let's say, a penalty? And then we look into it in the future and decide, okay, do we want a pole here or not? And decide, because I just hate to put that much money into it, and then they decide, you know, we're going to do something different, you know, we're not going to put them up there anymore. And then we've spent $200,000 to $300,000 on it, and there's not as much of a benefit for us, so.
The, I mean, there, there is, I guess, kind of addressing Mary's point quick. There is a notice requirement, I believe, to each provider. If we're going to discontinue the lease, then we do have to at least discuss with them that we're not going to continue the lease by a certain date, right? So they know to take their equipment down. Same thing they do, I think US Cellular was on one. I think they discontinued one of them. You know, actually, it might have been Sprint when the merger happened. That's what it was. They kind of gave the village notice they're going to discontinue. We're going to take the equipment down from these poles, or from these towers. So kind of the same, I guess, requirements apply if we were going to do so, but that would be to each individual one. My, my interaction with each provider is that, I mean, the village is a pretty sought-after area for carriers. One, certainly to provide access to a lot of people in the, in the village for, for cell tower service. But also, you have to look at the surrounding communities, right by Lambo Field and right by Highway 41. It's a very sought-after area. So do I envision any time in the foreseeable future that the cell tower providers are all going to want to come down off that Babcock Tower in the future? Could happen? No. It could happen, sure. Do I foresee that? Not really, considering the fact that we frequently get requests to extend these, a lot of them are 99-year leases. And we, I, we don't negotiate in 99-year leases because it's kind of the same term for 100 years. And we prefer to kind of have these broken-up individual increments in the terms. But I guess the point what I'm trying to make is that a lot of these providers, for their budgeting purpose, like to extend these leases out for a long period of time, so they, so they know. But Brian and I, and I know Al Farber's involved quite a bit as well, we can, I think, and Greg, Greg also put together a really nice spreadsheet on everything. We can get some specific terms for you for that Babcock Tower as well. I'm pretty sure they're there for an extended period of time. Just not, off the top of my head, don't know.
I, I would like to see you go back and talk to those three providers and find out what their future plans are. What are, what are they going to be doing in this area? Are they planning on, because they boosted now to different 5G, and I know 6G is coming. Is that coverage area going to be bigger so that they don't need as many towers as before?
Yeah, pretty much. What, when they do, when they increase technology like that? And like I said, Al is really good at working with them as well. They typically take down, I don't want to say expired or outdated parts, but they'll actually put in less antennas with the technology advancement now. And they'll put up, okay, let's say if six antennas.
Maybe they won't need as many antennas.
Correct, exactly.
So I'd like to get that insight from those providers to say, okay, what's the future for the next five years? 10 years? Are you guys, is there technology coming that you're going to be eliminating some of the, the need for some of these cell phone towers?
I think if it's agreeable to the board, what we can do is, you know, there's no significant rush on this. We could do some further analysis. We can run through a couple of different examples. We can get further detailed information on the lease agreements. Certainly speak to the providers and see if, even now, if, if they recognize that we may remove that tower, even if it's in 2027. If we were to replace that tower today or within the next couple of years, would they be willing to negotiate an extension to their lease? So then that way you have some assurances prior to the investment of a new tower. In addition to that, we can do an analysis to figure out what the overall expense will be to remove the tower, any of the structures, and then make the parcel constructible for, let's say, a single-family home if that's desired, and then run a cost benefit. What will be more advantageous over the next 20 to 25 years, based on a simple analysis?
And let's just make sure that we understand what the future is and what their needs are going to be. Because they have to put up a tower, and then, well, yeah, their technology is past. We don't need that many towers. We only need one tower in Ashwabana at this site, and it's going to cover all of Ashwabana now. I think I'm a little unrealistic with that. But, you know, that technology is, you know, with microwave technology and things like that coming out, there's all kinds of different things that they know about. We necessarily don't know what they're, what they're doing.
Yeah, I guess that's possible. I mean, I think Brian and Al, you might have more knowledge on this than I do. But typically, what we see now is that there's like this, kind of like a mother hub, big antenna, and then shoots down to smaller ones. This is where we kind of see scattered in the village. That's where they're at right now. I mean.
Same thing with Wi-Fi technology, same thing.
And just for an example, we just extended a lease, actually with, with the technology advancing, they're removing some antennas on the building or, or on the tower itself. So let's say six, they put three on the same tower, but we, or, or maybe added a little bit more. We will increase the rent on those, because when they're adding tower, there's somewhat of a, not significant change, but there's a change to it as well from the original lease. So we've actually increased the rent with, I think Verizon being one of them recently because of that.
I'd really like to see us continue to get that rental income, because that's just, talking about free money.
Free money. Okay, so do we want, have, want a motion to get?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we table lists and kick it back to staff to gather additional information based on the board's feedback.
Second. We have a motion and a second to table this item to get more information, have staff get more information. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10M, Consider Discuss Act on Village of Ashwabana Municipal Ordinance Number 06-1-24, Amending Operations of Short-Term Rental Licensing. Patrick and Joel, you guys worked on this, so.
At the, the May board meeting, I think the village board recalls that the direction, or the motion actually at the May meeting, was not to amend the ordinance itself, but it was, the motion was actually to direct staff to bring back an ordinance amendment. What would this amendment look like, specifically talking to just the, those licensees that are grandfathered from the six-night consecutive minimum rental? So as it stands right now, July 1st, no licensee but for owner occupied will be able to, there won't be an exception to the six-night minimum. So every short-term rental licensee will have to rent for six nights at a minimum, unless it's owner occupied as of July 1st. The proposed ordinance, based on the village board discussion last meeting, was to extend that grandfather clause for one more year until July 2025. So there's discussion last meeting about it, but there's also discussion about maybe not amending it at all. So again, it was just to bring the ordinance back to see what it looked like. So what, what we did was attach two different versions of the same ordinance number. Okay, so the same ordinance number has two versions. The first version is extending that grandfather clause of, or excuse me, extending the sunset clause to July 1st, 2025. So those licensed from 2022 to 2023 have until July 1st of 2025 to not rent their units for six nights. The other version is basically, we're going to eliminate it. We're going to just go by what the ordinance currently reads and not act on it. But if they're, they're not, if the board isn't going to act on it, what staff would request is actually to clean it up. And that way, it just kind of strikes that language. So in essence, it's a little redundant just having that language in the ordinance itself right now. So that version two basically just strikes that out, but it's the same concept. Everyone but owner occupied, short-term rentals, will have to abide by the six-night minimum. So that's version two. So after discussion, I'm happy to answer any questions. After discussion, I would just ask the board to, I guess, vote on a, on one of the versions of the ordinance, if, if that's what the board wants to do. I also just kind of wanted to highlight, I know there's a somewhat different, there are a lot of questions that came from staff, maybe the board as well. This is completely different from the 180-day consecutive, non-consecutive rentals, right? So all those licensed in '22 to '23, they're permanently grandfathered, do not abide by the 180-day consecutive rental time. So they can rent 180 days anytime.
Anytime for the 360.
Correct, yes, right. Anyone licensed after 2023 will have to abide by 180 days consecutive language. So I know it's confusing, but hopefully explained a little bit. So those are the two versions of the same ordinance number right now. Again, second one is just kind of a cleanup. Take no action, that's the cleanup on it. The first one is to extend that sunset clause by one year. It's for the board's direction.
I know that last time I was the one that kind of talked about kicking it out a year. And the more that I've considered it, number one, short-term rentals this next year, they're going to be successful. There's no doubt. And the six-night minimum doesn't impact them whatsoever. We've proven through this past year that what we have in place is, is starting to slow down the short-term rentals, which is helping us to try to get more. which is helping us to try to get more families to move into Ashwabanon. And in the long run, that should continue to go. So I would definitely be in favor of just eliminating the six nights and going, going forward with the ordinance the way we initially had written it, just remove the, the sunset clause.
I, I feel opposite, Jay, based on a lot of what you just said, which is I think we got this going in the right direction. I'm willing to take another year to sunset this. And if we continue to go in the right direction, we've made the wise choice. Now, if we don't, then I have to reconsider my thoughts on it. But I, again, I'll go back to just my personal feelings that I, I, it's my feeling, I don't like penalizing the people that were already there, that were, whatever you want to call it, ahead of the game or. Anyway.
Well.
I, I, I think, I, I don't think that one year gives us enough information, but I like the direction it's going. I'd like to give it one more year. And hopefully continues to, the, the, the problem continues to dissipate, if we want to call it.
I just don't know that we're going to get any more additional information. I felt like it was more of just kicking the can down the road. And I kind of felt like we were going to end up in the same spot again. That's kind of why I changed my position. I just don't see us getting any further information. We are still giving them the ability to be able to, to rent out their places 360 days a year compared to new people coming in, you know, new licensees. So I feel like that's quite an advantage. And they certainly should be able to figure out how to post it out there for six days and make it work.
Oh, I'm sure there's ways they can get around it. And they figured it out, but we're going to force them to do that.
Yeah, and, and I can.
Why force them to, why force them to break an ordinance or a law? And I don't think, and I think, yeah, another year does give you more information. We haven't developed a trend yet. I mean, we've got a little bit of information so far. I think a second year gives us a good idea where the trend is going. If it's really going in that direction or not.
And just to clarify, this is only for the ones that have had licenses and are in good standing and have not changed a thing. So Aaron, I think you said at last meeting it was about 50 or so we're talking about people?
Probably fewer than that.
Okay.
Just for a frame of reference, where we're at right now with short-term rental licenses. We do have 41 approved for the 2024, 2025 year. Last year, we did have 74. But again, keep, a couple of things to keep in mind. One is that there's usually another rush just before Packer season. So people kind of delay, 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 like, oh, yeah, it expired, but, oh, well, I'll wait till Packer season to do that. And also, we had a couple apartment units, apartment buildings that rent out short-term rentals that went to five or more units, which then requires them to get a hotel license separate from the short-term rental license. So they don't need our license at that point. So that'll decrease that number just because of that.
One of, one of the things that I, I would say too is at one of the room tax meetings, the gentleman that does inspections for the county, because every short-term rental, you rent your home out for one night, you have to have a county inspection. And I went through, it's very hard to find. Chris was very gracious on finding me the directions on how to, how to get to where I needed to be. There are over 100 in Ashwabna right now that have been inspected by the Brown County Health Department, so. Anyway, and if they rent for less than 10 nights, they don't need our, our license, so. Anyway.
Jay, did you make a motion to adopt the second version then, or not?
I did not at this point, but I was going to. I, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the section, the second version, which would eliminate the, the six, the six nights.
It wouldn't eliminate it.
Would require the six nights.
It would require.
Require the six nights, right. Require the six nights.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to take the second version of the ordinance, Number 06-1-24, which cleans up the language and eliminates the provision of the exception for the year, the grandfathering. Does everybody understand that?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
No down here.
Clarify, so try to be crystal clear. No. Anybody else?
Okay, number 11, items for next agenda. Well, we'll have the, the rezoning on, on the next agenda. If there's anything anybody would like to see on, give the office a call. Number 12, closed session items. Okay, during the meeting, the Village Board of Ashwabna may convene into closed session pursuant to A and B as listed on the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to move to closed session?
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please. President Kardowski? Yes. Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
And Trustee Flukie?
Yes.